Bag in one of my trucks.
I got them everywhere.
I put one down. We go to the do trivia at the brewery and there's always a printed sheet to do. Section of it.
Chris, you ready for this meeting? You have a lot of my.
No, 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 we're just.
We're most finished.
We're discussing, we're discussing when I need these.
We're a most finished hour meeting.
Whenever you are ready, Chairman Parker, I'm ready.
Tony Town Planning Commission, please come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. This is the first for the new year since we haven't been here since November. So would you please stand for the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
The records reflect that all members are present. You've received the draft minutes for November 25th, 2024. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Done.
Approve the motions, approve the minutes for November 25th.
Our second?
I'll second that.
Second by Chris. Further discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Lewis, Nate, Kerry, thank you guys. Jim, you want to lead us off on the City of Tony Town annual report, what we need to do here and so forth?
Okay.
Daryl, Jim, either one of you?
Thanks, sir. Jim, I'll take it if you don't mind.
Okay.
So the annual report, this looks just like the one from last year, but the date has changed. This reflects our activity for the year 2024. This, well, once this gets approved, the chairman, there's a letter for you to sign if it was on the bottom of that pile, that I'll get to Tiffany and sure headed in to the people who would do this evening. If the county compile the entire list for the county and report it to the state. So pretty straightforward. The, there is a fifth page that is blank. I don't know how to get rid of that. We had it last year, but in any case, the report is complete. We have ones, one subdivision, if you guys want me to read it through, we have one subdivision that created two lots. There are two separate lots. The corner lot is a lot larger than the interior lot. That's at the corner of Tony Heights and Bum Runner, yeah. So Evapco kept us pretty busy with their non-residential final approval site plans. They have another one coming. They're gonna, they're working on the parking lot beside them, so. Seeing them in here soon.
Where would this one be?
Right, right beside the ones that they're, that you just got completed and got through the process. Yeah. A little surprised by that, that's good that they need it. So that will have to go through a Board of Zoning Appeals, cases like the first one. They own the land, but that land is not in the same parcel as the principal structure. So that'll create a Board of Zoning Appeals. So I think they're hoping to come in here in February for early March scenario for the BZA and then back to you guys.
So the only thing new is in the two lots on 20, 20 View, right?
Yeah.
Seems like we did a lot of work in it last year. Soon as we accomplished it.
Coming on Tony View, I think that would be one new lot because it was one existing lot subdivided into two.
Yeah, we took two, yeah, we took one lot and made two, so.
Right, so there's one, one new lot, but it will be two new dwellings.
Okay. House Daryl on this?
Um, no, just the, as always, Lorraine has been very busy with the parks. The, I don't know if you all been able to see the tot lot that's been redone across from the football field. Yeah, it's pretty nice, a lot of work. That looks nice. I mean, some, some of those things were on there when I was a kid. You remember the, the spring thing? That was just, you know, every pair is nightmare. That's, that's finally gone. Yeah, pretty, pretty straightforward. And I'll make that correction that Jim had, was nice to let us know about.
So you're looking for a motion for approval to submit this to the county, right?
Yes, sir.
If I like to make that a motion?
I'm making a motion that we submit the annual report to the county.
Second to that, second by Bill. Other discussion? You ever have a motion for approval for the county, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Lewis, Nate, Kerry, thank you. I'll sign this later.
Okay.
Or it's an agreement, none? Your report next, Daryl?
So there's a lot going on in our city. We've had a lot of meetings with the developers of Mountain Brook and Garnet Ridge, trying to get things figured out square, square way there. I, I. You notice the agenda looks a little bit different. There have been three things knocked off of that.
Can we just, before you jump, go back to your, your report on it? The traffic study, the letter, I didn't quite understand exactly what they were saying on the traffic study for Mountain Brook. Could you explain that a little bit, or?
Which letter?
Letter from somebody.
I got a letter from State Highway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. What, what are they actually saying? Saying we should wait till we get, before we give any final approvals, till we get consensus from the State Highway on both 140 and 194 entrance as being the second means of egress? Is that what they're saying?
That's what I took it to mean. So my question for number one was, you know, does that include all the streets, all, all the way up to the, the square? And then all the streets all the way out to the exit on the other side of Flowserve? You know, so I would think if we're gonna do a, you know, we want to take all that into account if we're gonna do a, a traffic study of the area. And, and the new park entrance, Allen Dale Lane?
Yeah, we're talking from square both directions.
Yeah, but, but the future stuff too, like the park. Right, we got the park entrance we're talking about too, that would.
Right, you know.
So this is a, a comment letter to the, it's called the Traffic Study Group. So we're, there will be a letter coming back from them to answer what, what we're talking about here, so I don't have that letter.
Okay, so we'll hear more back?
Oh, it's ongoing, oh, it just, you got a long way to go, man. Long way to go.
It looks like they, they, they wanna, I don't know, I, I guess, is there not a queuing analysis on, for, for the impact on the square? Is that what I'm reading in this? I'm not, it's not really clearly worded.
Right, I was confused what they, what they were.
Did they do it not included, or did they not do it?
It revised the study to include a queuing analysis for both site accesses as well as the intersection. So did they not do a queuing analysis with the traffic study that they sent in? I mean, I don't know, I haven't seen it, so I don't know.
We don't, we didn't, we haven't received the actual traffic study yet.
No, it's not, it hasn't been finalized yet. We, we asked CDM Smith, our consultant engineer, to have their folks in their traffic area, their transportation engineers, look at it and provide comment on it because we don't have the in-house expertise to really understand the, all the methodology and the calculations they do. So there's actually a, a meeting pending with the consultant that did the study, our consultant engineer and the developer, to try to hash out all the revisions that need to be made to the study. And we would also like to see the, I guess, recommendations or mitigation strategies explored a little bit more in the study. So if they, for example, if they say that a level of service at a particular intersection is gonna be below the APFO threshold, we want them to provide mitigation opportunities as to, you know, what could we do to offset that, to make it, you know, to ma, to reduce that inadequacy. So there's, there's a lot that still needs to be looked at with the study.
Question of whether they need to add turn lanes, XL, Dcel lanes. I know that State Highway is pending funding. They've talked about putting a arrow to turn left from East Baltimore Street onto Frederick Street.
Westbound on 40.
Right, so is that, do they need to account for that in the study, or because it's not there yet, not account for it? Or should they, like, look for both options?
That, right, that should be recognized in the study. I mean, it's not funded yet, but it's moving through the, through the process in SHA.
That would be the same as like the park entrance, right? It's not there yet, but we're expecting it to be there.
So the park entrance is a little bit different because that plan has not been approved yet. So when, when a study looks at background information like that, they're looking at what's been, what's been approved and could be recorded. So, for example, the only thing I think that was considered background when the study was, was kicked off was Evapco's office expansion project because that had been approved already. All the other site plans, you know, had not been approved. So they're not really considered as background information because they may or may not have been approved.
Jim, this, this impact study here, what's the timeline for that? And then what's gonna happen once park, that part is gonna be approved? Revis it again? Is that what happens? Just to kind of explain that to me?
I, I think it's gonna depend largely on the timing of, of that project and when, when construction is planned and so on. We didn't, we didn't require a traffic study for the, the park traffic. You know, but, but certainly, yeah, that is a, I guess, a factor because, you know, when, when, you know, soccer games wrap up, that's gonna be a flood of traffic coming out, you know, the two access points.
So the way you described the park not, you know, it's not approved yet, I got that, you know, which is maybe unfortunate. But what about the, the exit pass Flowserve? That would, that's not really approved yet, so you're saying that would not really be included?
That, that was supposed to be part of the study also as to, you know, what the impact of that road connecting out to 140 would be. With, you know, the hope being that they could demonstrate that with that, what, what they're calling Denali Boulevard, being built all the way from 140 across to 194, that they could show some improvement in the way the intersection of 140 and 194 performs.
I would, I would think that would help them.
But that was right, so that was supposed to be projected in their, in their analysis.
Okay, I guess we'll be hearing more, more about this.
Still work in progress.
Okay.
All right. Daryl, I'm sorry, go ahead and move along with your next, your best.
Okay, so the agenda, it's been a few things knocked off of there. Duffy's gone, Tannery Bar is gone. Tony View is gone. The plan for the elementary school is now down in an construction phase. That's all waiting to happen. That's, that's good, so some movement there, some cleaning up. Myself and, and others in the city staff are helping to clean up some of the old escrow that's, you know, that gets left on many municipalities. Books that, and we're cleaning that up. So that's a feel-good thing, it's, it's something we do in our spare time. Any questions on that? Okay, so Major Mitchell and I have met with the Tony Town Collision, who will start doing the towing of vehicles that are on city property in streets. Not many towing companies will tow a vehicle without a key, right? Have will, so you will need a key in hand, we don't need it unlocked, don't need it parked. They're gonna be as gentle as they can, but you can, you know, still get the vehicle out of there. So there's a lot of it here in town. I mean, I think that, you know, I don't know if they still have the auctions the way they used to, but when Dan and I were kids, you go to the auction for about 150 bucks, you get yourself a car that, it, it made you around the block a couple of times, but then they just sort of like become, you know, the old puppy that's out in the corner of the yard that's just chained up back there. But, so anyway, there's been some good movement already and, you know, like any, any activity in the city, that word spreads. So hopefully that'll be something that benefits us and certainly makes things look nicer, especially when there's a lack of parking in certain areas already.
You say Tony Collision, they're just doing the towing, they're not doing the storage, right?
Right now, they're doing towing and the storage.
So they'll, they'll be putting a request, put a fence up then, right, for storage, for security?
Not, maybe, maybe not. So most towing, storage areas, there's an insurance requirement through the state of Maryland for, you know, if your vehicle is, is damaged because of an accident or what have you, that must be stored someplace because the insurance lobbyists want to make sure their product is safe and clean. All right, so they added an expensive fence. But if, if Tony, if Tony Down Collision doesn't want to do a fence, they don't have to do a fence.
That's between them and their insurance carrier.
Yeah. Yes, no, I mean, it's no worse than sitting on Johnson Street, you know, here in the city for six miles without a plate on it.
Well, I, I just, you know, as long as they're saying there's some kind of screening or, or wherever the storage is, it's not visible from the street because we don't want to create the appearance of a junkyard.
Well, they already have a viable business that does this, we're just adding our cars to their business.
Two years ago, we had, people came in requesting a storage area and they said they had to be fenced in because they were gonna do the towing for the state or for.
Yeah, there you go. So again, the state may have a requirement for the, state of Maryland has a requirement for it. So if you're gonna tow like vehicles that are impacted from a collision or something, it must be a secure area. Yeah.
If you're towing what are essentially abandoned, abandoned vehicles. We're talking about untagged vehicles on city streets. And I know that there's a couple of places where we have city property where there are some vehicles parked, so.
Not for long, and something else, I don't, I don't know why this happens, but it does. There are a number of vehicles that right now have, appear to be out of registration. They're not, they just don't have the stickers on them. So the only thing the city of Tony Town could do, law enforcement wise, and again, we're not trying to hurt anybody, we're just trying to get what is obviously not been messed with for a period of time, get them off the street. And plus, it makes you feel good at night because it's illegal. The other thing is that when people, the only thing they can do about the vehicles that are on the stickers on the vehicle would be a failure to display. And, you know, but they, but they have, there's two here in town that, the majors told me that they are legal, but they need to find stickers in the one place. Someone has no clue where the stickers are. They have current registration. Been a lot of talk for the traffic impact studies about a number of things, like, like the letter that, from, from SHA. There will be a response coming back. It's been a while, except it's from December the 5th. These traffic impact studies are incredibly complex. They, they look at, you know, they, they look at everything, really. And their custom, counties involved in, in certain TISs because, you know, there's an interest from, from one of their major roads nearby. So, and they, they take a while to complete, evidently. So there's been a number of meetings on that because there's a lot of activity running around, happening around town. You know, we've seen the, the building that was demolished, that was the old Tony Town Towers.
Car Motors, yeah.
Yeah. There's hopefully some news coming from them, the owners of that property, about something that may be of interest going in there. The Huffman property beside it, which is across from McDonald's, and there's another study going on there with, with, with all of that. That's a pretty big parcel residential at the top end and commercial down at the front. So that'd be ways being looked at as far as access to Sales Mill or 140 at some point. So these things take a while, but they're, they're being looked at seriously right now.
Jim, did I understand that you, that State Highway is willing to grant access to like a relocated Sales Mill Road onto 140, like down by the Baptist Church? But there's a dollar sign attached to it?
That's, yes, that's, that's my current understanding of, of the situation is that State Highway has not closed the door on breaking access for that section of 140. Developers team is currently researching, trying to find out if Carroll County was compensated years ago when 140 was, was built, if Carroll County was paid, basically sold their access rights back to the state for the road. So that research is ongoing right now. You know, if the county did not pay, I'm sure the developers team will challenge any invoice that, you know, or, or State Highway might, or, but, but the, the warning of, you know, be prepared for sticker shock was, was floated. Buying the access rights back is not.
Not an inexpensive thing to do.
Not inexpensive.
All right, Daryl?
Okay. So been a little bit of discussion with the, ongoing with the, on the Department of Public Works shop area. So they're still looking into that, hoping that, you know, they find great love for the mayor and council on some monies for that down the road. Again, just, just planning ahead is a wise thing in this case. There's gonna be a meeting later this week with the owners of the property that are to the left-hand side of the new park proposed entrance off of Frederick Street. There's a drainage pipe that needs to be greatly expanded. We'd like to meet with them and see how, what we can come to some type of agreement to go across their property instead of going around their property. So we'll have more information on that later. So that's good that we're moving down that way, this could save us a lot of money. So there's a, in the R7500 area on East Baltimore Street, there's a property that is currently one dwelling. They wanted to do apartments, a total of three apartments in that building. Now, we're working on that, that's my first one of these, so it's pretty interesting, it's very fascinating, it's expensive to them. It's an investment, I guess, so.
Any plans with the front part of that lot?
Sorry?
Any plans with the front part of that lot?
Not at this point, right now, it's, it's left and right.
That's the house that sits way back, that sold not long ago?
Yeah, 430 East Baltimore Street. So the city has a receipt of a, of a Soul Farm, a community village request. That'd be in front of the mayor and city council in February. Like any community coming in after the annexation, they have to apply for the community village. There's a lot to it. And again, more information to be coming, I guess, going up to the mayor and city council. It will come back to the Planning Commission at some point. And it will be open like a hearing, just like it was for the annexation.
Do you understand what that is? I mean, are they up to date on community villages?
Well, they seem to be. Yeah, well, hopefully they are, yeah.
At the end of the, of the meeting, we could have the new business, old business, we'll talk a little about the community village and different things. So we'll bring that up again at the end. When were they annexed? Do you, what year, was that last year or a year before?
No, it was 2019, I think. Twenty one, 22, wasn't it? Pretty sure it was 22.
I had just resigned the council to take this job when, somewhere in that area, that was 20.
Somewhere around 2022, okay.
It was the former mayor and council that, that voted on the annexation, so it's been more or less two years.
All right. Continue on then, Daryl.
Then one last item that is interesting, 3300 to Harney Road, it's the old Alexandra. Their septic system has failed. They, they can't, they have no option other than to hook up the city sewer, they're already on water. So to do that though, we require them to be annexed in. Non, non uncommon, it's happened before here in the town. There may be others because there's four or five houses there that, or one of them is probably in the same boat. But working on that so that, so we are looking to, they've asked us because they cannot get sewage otherwise. As luck would have it, their house that week was going on, going on, under contract for a new buyer. So, so mayor or the city's staff or, city staff are working with Jay and CLSI to get that package to the county, to get that coming in, so. Not a bad, the annex is not a bad thing.
Okay.
Got a question. So, so we talk, we're talking to Meads Crossing, Meadowbrook for the stormwater management and kind of the handoff to the city. So I think that, is that, that's something that typically happens with a development, right? So you go through the development and it gets handed off to the city? Is that true, or?
Yeah, so you don't, but as far as like, when, when the development's being handed over?
Yes, right, so Meads Crossing and Meadowbrook Stormwater Management. So you guys are talking about the Public Works Agreement, so.
Well, that's, so this is one sort of PWA by itself, Public Works Agreement by itself. So Meads and, those two developments share some stormwater management. And so we're working on that because I think that, I think Meadowbrook owned the majority of it, or it was built for Meadowbrook and Meads is benefiting from it as well, under an agreement. So I think that things have to be worked out on their end as to who's paying for what, but yeah, so it's, it's a measured, calculated thing, but they have to, I guess, figure out what they're gonna do there.
Okay, well, maybe it's, what I was getting, when I read that there, what I was thinking of, you know, actually when I read down below, we're gonna talk about community village coming up. So what I was looking for, you know, so we have the retirement center out there, can't think what it's called. Carroll Vista, Carroll Vista. And we have Meads that came in, they were both community village designations, correct? So are there like lessons learned? Is there an after-action review? Is anything that you, we would never do again? So I'm kind of like looking for stuff that you guys have learned that, you know, that we don't want to do again, basically. So I don't, I don't know if there's anything like that besides what you have in your brain.
Yeah, so on the stormwater management thing, so. Yeah, so on the stormwater management thing, so, um, whereas a, an equally large development, um, um, is, is not an, uh, a community village, um, like, um, uh, Meads is. But no, that's, I mean, that's, that's, that's a whole stormwater management part. That's totally separate and doesn't matter, community village or not.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll bring up the question later on when we talk about community village, about what we learn and don't want to do again. Thanks.
Sure. That's it for me, sir, unless you have any questions.
Are the, are the stormwater management facilities on in Meads Crossing, the property of the homeowners association, or are they city property?
They're, the city's not taking them over yet.
But they will be?
They will be, yes.
On to the updates on the...
Do you have questions? I mean, uh, I don't really have updates unless you have questions about them.
Uh, Stories Today, I had a couple of questions about that.
So they, they gave us a preliminary site plan, but we're not, we're not considering that in today's, tonight's meeting.
Actually looking through the drawings, though. I didn't see any locations where the dumpsters were gonna be, if they're gonna be placing any dumpsters on site.
Oh, you told me, oh, alright, so...
On, on, uh, Stories Today.
Yeah, so in my notes, we were gonna...
Here's the drawings.
You, you can discuss it if you'd like. In the note, in my report, it says that you don't need to bring them. We're gonna be discussing it probably next month.
Okay, so then all my questions, I'll hold for next month.
It's up to you, sir.
I'll hold them for next month. Everybody a chance to look at the drawings?
I just, like, um, so I just want to shoot those kinds of things to you, um, earlier.
I looked at the drawing, but that'd be interesting, your questions, so...
And there is no dumpster indicated.
I didn't see any.
Gotta have a storage. You gotta have stuff put somewhere. All right.
Out along the fence.
So any questions on the updates, uh, for Daryl?
Good.
All right.
Stories does plan to come in next month.
We're on to Jay for legal updates. Jay, welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I only have a, a couple of brief things because things are in so much flux. It deals with the Mountain Brook property. The attorney has worked with me in the past couple of weeks and gotten me a draft developers' rights and responsibilities agreement. And you're familiar with that concept. We've done it a few times with other developments. It really lays out the roadmap for the development, their obligations, the costs, the securities, uh, not quite like a public works agreement that deals with like the actual construction and the infrastructure, but more like things like what roads they're gonna build and how big they'll be and who's gonna pay for it and those kind of things. So they got us a draft because they are, uh, really excited about trying to get the project moving and they actually want the city to process this draft as soon as it possibly can. The process is, uh, the city staff has to make sure it's okay. So we haven't done that. And then it needs to go to the mayor and council, and they need to introduce it kind of like a, uh, an ordinance would be, so it's publicly available. And then it goes to you all for a, a review. And your review and hearing basically is to see whether the contents are consistent with the master plan. And then it goes back to the council for another hearing and approval or denial. So you can see, it's, it's quite a lengthy process. The, the issue, of course, we face is that it's no point in waiting to the end of the process to get the things in it that you want or the things that you don't want. You want to try to get all that done up front so everyone knows what's going on. And obviously, you have a lot of moving parts. As Daryl said, you have the, the state highway situation and the access, the state highway's letter on traffic, the town's plans on what we want to do for the bypass. Uh, the developer has their own ideas of how they want to do things. And from sitting in on your meetings for the past several months, you have some ideas. And, and right now, I, I'm, I'm the only one at the city that has fully digested the agreement. I've shared it with the staff, and we're gonna have a meeting sometime this week. But, but everybody doesn't seem to be on the same page. I guess that's basically my concern. And so, you know, I understand we want to move things along, and I want to make sure it happens at a speed we're all agreeable to. But, um, I think the biggest issue that we have to nail down, aside from all the things you're normally concerned with, because you'll do that anyway, but this road, this bypass, this highway, that, that's a, it's a big thing. And as you know, the issue is there's, they're gonna do the development in phases. And we, the city, do not want only to be stuck with an unbuilt portion of that road. We want to make sure that it's buildable and connects and that we can do these things. Because we have visions, as I told the attorney, we all remember the O'Brien Street Bridge and how that didn't get constructed till the city paid for it.
Keenan Street and Grand Drive.
Yeah. So, you know, we, we remember, we remember that in, in vivid in our minds, and we're very concerned about how that would work. Um, and I told you last month, we're, we're making really good progress with Flowserve. The city manager is working with them to try to get the easement. And that's a timing issue, too, because if you can imagine Flowserve, they seem to be on board with actually doing the easement across their property, but that actually encompasses their property, right? I mean, so I, if you owned the property, you'd be okay with an easement, knowing you'll have another entrance. But you might not be okay with it fifteen years from now. You, you might want that to happen sooner than, than that because you couldn't use that, that area. And so what I'm saying by laying all these facts out for you is, this is a very, very complicated issue that, that the developer wants to see resolved in the very near future. And so I know that, that Daryl and Jim and I and the town engineer is gonna be working on this. Um, but you all also need to be brought into the loop because what I would hate to happen is it comes to you all for a hearing, and you say, "This isn't even close to what we think we want." Um, you know, again, it's the mayor and council who are doing this agreement, but the law says the planning commission is supposed to have a role in it. So, so I was gonna propose that once the staff sees the agreement and goes through and kind of makes the first cut of it, that we would then circulate it to you along with the mayor and council so everybody can see at the same time. And you can shoot your concerns through Councilman Tillman and vice versa, so that the mayor and council and planning commission are all hopefully on the same page.
So, are, have there been timelines suggested anywhere along through this process in terms of the construction timeline?
They, they have not talked about construction at all. Um, in the agreement, they were talking about the adoption timeline. And in, their hope would be to have this adopted, this DARA that I'm talking about adopted in March. Um, that seemed realistic back in November. It doesn't seem realistic now, you know, with February being next week. So, you know, if March is their original goal, then maybe April, um, is what their goal is at that point. There's a lot of things that have to happen. And, uh, you know, I'm usually the Chicken Little telling you the sky is falling, that's what you pay me for. But in this situation, there has to be a lot of strategic issues because, you know, quite frankly, we're not gonna give them approval for the entire development, and they need approval for a, a mo- majority of their development to build the road. So we're gonna have to have some cooperation on this to make it happen.
Jake, um, can you like formalize this in a little, in, in a set of steps and, and distribute it out to us and to us, council, um, so that we have an idea what we're, everybody knows what they're facing, and then try to get us the, um, you know, the paper, the, the actual agreements to read through as soon as we can get them, obviously.
Yeah, um, I think that's the best thing. I, I know that we're having a meeting with the staff this week at some point in time to talk about the city's position, since the staff just, we just got all these things last week from them. So, I mean, that's how recent it is. And then we wanted to have a joint meeting with the city staff and the developer staff to kind of go over what we're calling the big-ticket items. Uh, nobody's gonna make a fuss about the type setting and the things in the agreement. We're talking about the big, big things that are deal breakers. And I think once we have that out on the table, that's the time where we should be able to give you a memo saying, "These are the things you need to consider," of, you know. And you can already imagine, I mean, I hope I'm conveying this, it's, it's probably gonna have to be a give and take. And that's the concern. And my big worry, because that's what I do, I worry for you, is that it's not just us and them making this deal. There's this other player, State Highway, that has a big impact on this deal, and they're not party to any of this. So, so yes, Councilman Tillman, I will make that happen. I want everybody to be knowledgeable what we need to do.
Jay, Jay.
Yes.
Hey, um, I might be repeating what Chris already brought up, but what's the term that the developer put out there, the very near future? What do you mean by that?
Uh, I'm, again, I'm talking about the paperwork, right? I'm not talking about the building of everything. If they had their choice, they would like this paperwork adopted by everybody in March.
Okay, it was the same thing, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Right. And, and so, I mean, and I think I have this right from your end. You have not given any type of final approval on this. I mean, it's still in the design phase, so this paperwork, let's just, we're gonna make this sort of hypothetical. Let's say you did adopt everything in March. They still have to go through the review process with you. That could take months. I mean, a long time. So the first question we're asked is, when would they construct? I mean, not anytime soon. I mean, that's not a this-year thing. That might be a next-year thing and probably the following year, maybe. Maybe Daryl and Jim can give you a better idea. But I guess that's what I'm concerned with, is that the city's gonna be asked to make some decisions and commit them to writing now. And it's not really gonna see an effect for maybe a year or so. And that's what makes us have to think about the, all the what-ifs. And that's what we need to spend some time on.
The developer did lay out a potential timeline many, many months ago when they were here presenting. Um, I don't have it in front of me, obviously, but, um, Daryl or I can go back and take a look at, at their, um, the phasing concept that they presented. So they're talking about, you know, four phases. Um, phase one, A and B being the, I guess we would say, southwest side of the stream crossing, uh, the one ninety-four side of the project. And that has, I guess, over half of the dwellings on it. Um, and that was gonna be broken down, you know, in an A, one A, one B stages. And then the north, northwest side, um, on the other side of the stream, phases two A and B. But they did project, uh, you know, kind of a timeline for each phase that, that I think it was like somewhere between eight and ten years, um, before it would be completed. But we can, we can go back and look at those exhibits and, um, maybe Daryl can send it out to you.
Thanks.
We're still basically on the concept plan.
Right. I mean, they're, they're in the preliminary plan stage, but they're far from approval.
As far as, right.
Right. Because they've, they've had, you know, we've thrown some curves at them after talking with State Highway, uh, the State Highway Administration and coming to some at least verbal agreement that eventually this road will be accepted by the state. Um, and that, that's thrown a design change at the developer because now that road's gonna need to be built to State Highway specifications rather than city specifications. So they've gotta go back and kind of rework, you know, basically everything related to that road so that, you know, not only the road itself, but the storm drain systems and everything meet State Highway's specifications. So, you know, that was quite a shift for them. So it's probably gonna be, there, there are ways from seeking preliminary plan approval.
Has it been decided who's making the last link to 140 on Flowserve's property? Or is that part of what you're working on, Jay?
That, that I do not believe has been decided unless we had an idea and they have an idea. In the agreement...
It's the same.
Right. In the, the draft agreement, um, they do agree that the same designer and the same constructor outfit company should be the one that does it when they do it. But there's a question of when and a question of who pays for it and things like that. And that's why I call them big-ticket items because this then plays into the role, just as the city manager just said, um, when something's designed to State Highway specs, it costs more to build, right? Because they're, they're more beefier roads. And the question that is going to be raised is, well, who is paying for that? The extras. You know, I'm, I'll make it up. If it, a normal road takes six inches of asphalt, but a State Highway takes twelve inches of asphalt, who's paying for the difference? So you can see with these question marks still in the air, there is a lot of ground to cover.
Comments for Jay?
Nope.
Anything else besides this, Jay?
Uh, just to tell you about the annexations, the, you know, we, uh, Daryl touched on them real briefly. Uh, the one thing that we have to do before any annexation is we do an annexation agreement, which basically gets their consent. It's, of course, a little bit more complicated than that. And, uh, we're, we're, we're ready to do that. That's where we are at that stage to get them to sign the consent and the agreement that says, "When you come in, these are the things you're gonna do." So, um, so we're working on that, too. So it's, there's a lot of agreements being worked on in the, this past month. And that's all, yeah.
All right. Comments? All right. Thank you, Jay.
All right.
County, Tiffany?
Evening. We have water sewer master plan, fall amendments, which Tony Town did not have a fall amendment. Will be going to public hearing on the thirtieth, and then the spring amendment cycle closes on February first. The housing study, we just received it. That's gonna go, um, online on the housing study website as well as the carol2035.org website. And there was a presentation made to the county commissioners on, on December nineteenth. Um, so it's kind of an abbreviated, all-the-high-points kind of thing, um, that can be viewed by going to the housing study website. Um, and then for the master plan, we're just really into, um, working on the open houses, which start on February sixth. Hopefully you have something, um, you've received something on those. Please, um, you are welcome to attend. And if you'd like to be part of them, you are welcome to set up, um, some information there or just stop by and talk to our citizens here when we're in Tony Town Library on the nineteenth of February as well. Um, for the annual report, thank you very much for taking care of that. And then, um, I think that's everything for me.
Dan, you have anything on the housing study? You were questioning that in the past.
I have nothing right now. I, I understand it's on the website, so I'll check it out.
It will be, um, the presentation's on the website, but we will get the actual plan up on the website this week. There were a couple, um, questions, uh, there were tables that were in the presentation that were not in the, um, the study itself that keep coming up, questions that just kept coming up. So it seems wise to just go ahead and insert them for the future. They're in, in there. So we were just waiting on those. And so that, we just got that, and it'll go up this week. And I'll send copies, too.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Old business, old business. Talk a little bit about the update on the comp plan. Daryl or Jim, either one of you guys want to open that up a little bit or not?
Uh, no, I just, we had been doing that, so I didn't know if you, if any carryovers, some thoughts, uh, from the last meeting. Uh, I can take that off if you want. But I, you know, seems to work pretty good so far as leaving on there.
The last, uh, comp plan meeting we had was really an excellent meeting and the, the data they put together. I mean, it was very impressive.
A lot more to review.
Yeah. It's, so much on there, I was trying to think how we can put it into the works.
Very interesting reading.
All right. Uh, new business? And put some things together on, um, community village and, uh, the overlay. I'd like to talk a little bit about that. If the members had a chance to look over, I thought maybe I had more time for Sunday to, to think about this. I know...
I was, I was drinking coffee and, uh, I was, uh, reading the stuff and...
What's coffee did you have, Dan?
Probably three cups by then.
Well, it was, you know, it got kind of wordy. All right, so if you want to start us off, and I don't know if we're gonna take the whole time this evening to go through the whole thing, but I would like to go through some sections of it, and you lead off.
Well, I mean, you can pick the sections if you want. I mean, I'm perfectly fine. I mean, uh, I didn't, there was, there was no proof re- reading. There was, I just started typing, so...
All right.
Not ready for public consumption, really. Just you guys. Not ready for public consumption, really, just you guys.
All right, anybody want to start off with any particular comments?
Well, so, Dan, can I make a statement?
Sure.
Your point on the townhouses when it comes to Community Village being various types of housing, that type of thing, it sort of resonated with me when I've read it, that I, I, I think I really do agree when it comes to townhomes. A lot of people won't buy a townhome for their forever home. It's, it's, it's a home that is easier to afford than a single family. So, I, I, when I read that, it sort of made a lot of sense to me.
So, I started thinking, I, I, actually, I never really thought about it till that morning, but about that aspect of a townhouse. So, when I was thinking about trying to put into rating what a small town is, that's when I started to think about, you know, you know, Jim said the other day, you know, hey, I got in trouble over here and by the time I got home, my dad already knew about it. Well, that happened to me a lot. So, anyway, that, I think what makes a small town feel, if that's what we want to have, I think a small town feel requires people to be in town for a certain amount of time. So, I don't know if it's five years or 10 years, but you have to be there and you have to do things in the town. And so, doing stuff in the town is, could be stuff like this, it could be going to your kids or your grandkids' soccer games, but it's just being there for a period of time and, and actually going out and participating in the different aspects of the town. That's what makes the small town feel. And so, the key to that for me was that, well, you can't do it in two years. You got to be here for a while. And so, when I started thinking about the townhomes, typically, I, I looked at them when I was, when I was young, too, and I said, well, hey, I'm going to buy this house and then I'm going to sell it and, you know, build the house that I really want, you know? So, I think, not everyone, I mean, of course, there's, but there's a lot of people that buy a townhouse with the intention of moving as soon as they save enough money to go buy another house. So, so, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but I'm just saying if we want to help a small town feel, maybe we want to make people, or make people want to stay here longer.
That means making people or getting people to be more active in their city or in their town.
So, but anyway, that's, that's kind of how it came to that fault, whether it's right or wrong, that's a.
Yeah, it's a, it was a good point. It, it, it made me think that way because, you know, you talked about coming in on what, Crimson, Crimson, was it?
Actually, it, Kenan Street, so you're coming down Kenan Street there. So, you know, it, it looks really nice now, all, all new town, all new homes and the street's clear. And so, that's, that's something that I think is really nice, in my opinion.
So, the Community Village, when I look at Meads, it's very attractive. In five years, when the trees are more mature, that's going to be a gorgeous development. So, the Community Village has a few things. I mean, the lessened amount of infrastructure is, it can't be any more important than that right there, Jim, because.
What, I'm sorry?
The infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Yeah, less, less sewers and everything else.
So, it's fascinating. Jim, you're going to help me out on this.
Well, I definitely, I mean, I don't, I don't need to see the numbers. I believe that you put stuff closer together, your pipes are shorter.
What is it, the front line assessment, the front, the, the assessment for like the water and like what Meads did?
Oh, they, um, yeah, I think Meadowbrook and Meads Crossing have a, like, I don't know if it's a front foot assessment or they have like a sewer or maybe even stormwater benefit assessment that the residents pay ongoing.
Yeah, so is that.
Reimburse the developer for their investment in, in that infrastructure. But a lot of water and sewer providers, though, also charge a, a fee based on the size of the water line or sewer line serving the property so that they have a, like, regardless of usage, they have a steady revenue stream coming in that they can put aside for maintenance rather than like ongoing operations. So, that, you know, if, if I've got a, you know, the city accepts, say, you know, 5,000 feet of 8-inch water main, we would say, okay, it takes, it costs us this much to replace, you know, 8-inch water main per linear foot. The life expectancy of this ductile iron water main is X. So, that's going to be, for us to be able to replace it when the time comes, we need to charge each household so much per linear foot, you know, and it'll be based on how many linear feet each house has. And then that gets collected, you know, each quarter with the water and sewer bill. But it doesn't pay for the day-to-day operation of the system. It's put away and saved up for the eventual replacement of that infrastructure. So, when we try to compare water and sewer rates with other municipalities around the county, it's very challenging to do because everybody does it a little differently. We're, I, I, I think it'd be safe to say that we are becoming in the minority of just charging strictly based on usage with no kind of base fee or anything like that. So, at, at any rate, so that's, that's one way that some developers, as well as local governments, are trying to cover costs for that infrastructure.
Well, so you guys heard me, I just wanted to know the name of the, the term was.
The front foot.
Appreciate it, Jim.
Hopefully, hopefully, I answered the question.
You got, you nailed it, I mean, so. If Meads Crossing would have just built, built that outright, it would have added about $8,000 to a home. All right, so why not charge $8,000 for the home? Because some of these people that are coming in here are going, oh, my God. They, you know, they look at HUA dues, not being on Meads, let's, let's just make up our own town, Haleville, all right? And there's an HUA. Started out at $74 a month, or $38 a month, now it's more than, it's almost double that. So, everybody's bills are going up. That wouldn't happen in Hailtown, that would happen in Bradtown. But, but when, when it comes down to it, you know, a lot of these calls should be, I think, more upfront. There's, you know, we're talking about, you know, what, what would you do differently? Small things like, as, as the director planning is owning. When a developer comes in, I realize that the signs are like the last things to go on because they're getting knocked down. Knock them down. No parking signs should be up before the, around the time the first houses were sold. And that way, you get to pick what, what you come home to. In my office, I came in on a Monday. Saturday, people were out there planting signs here and planting signs there, here a sign, there a sign. And people came home and was like, I can't park front of my house anymore, which is not the right thing to happen. I don't think it's the city's responsibility, but knowing it's a thing, it's a small example, but those are the kinds of things I would change on a small level. And they add up to make the big points that we're talking about when it comes to what's, what's the streets, like the parking. Dan, you mentioned in your email about the, a lot of the garages you can't park in anyway. That's true, you know, you can't. Some of these garages, I mean, and then where there is a garage, there's no storage for it, there's no outside storage. So, where's your trash can going? Where's your, where's your.
So, with the, with the garage, I mean, if I have a garage, I can park my car in and I decide to put stuff in it. That's, you know, my choice, I guess, so I have one less parking spot. But I just, I think we have to make sure that you can actually park a car in that garage. If you're going to count it as a parking spot, you got to make sure it's, you can actually put a car in there.
And there's enough room.
Yeah, right, right. So, so if you have steps on the inside, you know, that takes away from where you can park your car. So, you got to measure from the steps, not from the wall. So, just, there's, if you're going to count it as a parking spot, it has to be, you have to better put a car in there.
That's what I got you.
I think when it comes to, to townhouses, you know, obviously, they're less, they're less expensive to build. They're less expensive to buy. And one of the things, you know, we keep talking about the buzzword of affordable housing. And you create that more affordable housing by having some townhouses as part of this housing stock that you're selling. Is that, then that's, that's part of it. It's more, more affordable than, than, you know, the big house on the quarter acre lot. So, when we talk about planning for affordable housing, that's kind of what we're looking at is, is planning for some, how do we, how do we increase densities to allow for that kind of housing stock, to allow for that kind of affordable housing use without overloading our system? And the Community Village is kind of the tool to do that because it allows us to say, all right, let's do town, you know, certain percentage of your development can be townhouses. I think where we go wrong is we don't, we don't work with the developers at an early enough stage to decide where the townhouses are and how they're arranged to really make full use of the Community Village idea. I think, you know, not that we want to be telling developers what to do, but I think, you know, we ought to be giving them some guidelines in terms of what we want to see.
How do you determine in a development park or what's going to be affordable housing compared to a luxury?
Well, that, that, that's kind of, yeah.
Like, I guess when we went to the state thing down at Columbia, we took a tour, some of us. They had certain sections of their townhouses was allocated for affordable housing. How did they determine that section based on a dollar amount for the rest of the housing?
Well, some of the.
Based on your income or was it based on the value of all the properties there?
They may have taken a section and said, we're going to make this area here and this area over here, and we're going to have those as income-based in order to get the tax credits. Because when you're talking about a development that big, the tax credits really mean something there. So, you know, that, that whole business of, of income-based tax credits for developments and, and, you know, for income-based housing rates, there's a lot to that and I don't begin to understand it. Or, or, you know, but I know it's, I understand generally how it works, but I don't understand all the mechanisms of it and who gets what out of it. Obviously, that, you know, it must be, it must be worthwhile to do. But even if it isn't an economical or a financial thing to do, getting directive from on high at the state to say that we have to do it. So, we, you know, can't continue to, to just build out quarter acre lots on big pieces of ground because then we're not doing anything in that regard toward, toward creating, you know.
So, I think I have a hard, I kind of get choked up every time I call a $400,000 townhome affordable, so.
Yeah, relative to a $600,000 single family, you know.
So, so the thing that, just because you have a quarter acre lot doesn't mean you have to put a big house on it. So, I guess the, the thing that, it seems like they build, I mean, you, you don't have to put a big house on it. So, I mean, to me, I'd rather have a R7500 with a smaller house on it and I would call that affordable as opposed to.
Some of the, one of the comments on the survey was that the community would like brick homes. Just room siding and all that, more brick homes.
I would be curious, so if you drive up like Tonny Drive or Tonny Heights, a lot of small houses, we just put those two other houses there, so that's R7500, I believe. So, I wonder how that would be compared to the Community Village. So, yeah, your Community Village, the houses are even closer together. So, you have less pipes, all that stuff. But R75, they're, in my opinion, they have yards, they have small houses and, you know, it's, it's not spread out like R10,000, so I think that would be a good option, really.
Well, I have a big question here. If the statement down here that you feel that the fire and EMS cannot handle this community, looking at a damn thing, it's not being fair to the people and putting them in a dangerous situation. If that's a true statement.
So, I, I think that is, it is my opinion. I do believe it is written in the latest, I can't remember what they call the, the report for the county.
Concurrent management report.
Yes, yes, it is stated in there that it's an issue for Tonny Town.
Well, then we shouldn't be looking to that issue gets taken care of because we're putting people in a dangerous situation.
I don't know, Jim, I'm not sure where, where the APFO starts, comes into consideration. You know, should we be quashing preliminary plans based on APFO?
That measurement does come into play during the preliminary plan stage. We usually don't do the APFO tests until we're approaching the approval point for them because, you know, a, a plan might be in the preliminary plan stage for a year and a half. So, if we do the APFO at the beginning of it, by the time it's ready for approval, those numbers may all have changed. So, I, and, and this will be Daryl's first rodeo with a major subdivision. But, you know, I, I like to wait until we're close to that approval point so the numbers are, you know, valid when we're getting ready to vote to approve it. And, you know, something that is part of the APFO segment of both the site development plan and subdivision regs is, you know, that something may be inadequate today. And I think that's what we would find like with, you know, water and sewer, for example. Well, water, for example, we don't have recharge to be able to pump our wells, you know, to what they're capable of doing. So, right now, we don't have water for Mountain Brook Farm or the Hoffman property or Sewell. But we're working on developing that capacity so that by the time they're ready for approval, we will have the capacity to, to serve them. So, at the preliminary plan stage, we're going to need to be able to say, you know, here is our plan to mitigate this inadequacy. And, you know, I, I don't have the code right in front of me, but basically, you know, if there's a plan and a funding plan to address the inadequacy, we can still approve it because then the capacity will, there's a plan to have that capacity in place by the time it's needed. But with the fire EMS, you know, that's something obviously that we don't control. And yet, you know, the county is working through the process of that combined volunteer and, you know, professional system or, you know, hybrid organization. But I don't know at this point when they anticipate to be adequately staffed at Tonny Town to get those response rates improving. You know, I think Tonny Town's been teetering at that late no-response threshold for a very long time. And something I would like to do that, that I guess technically would take a code revision is, because sometimes the department is not particularly responsive when we send out certification forms for the APFO that maybe we have, and I don't know if it would be the, you know, the fire chief, Chief Robinson at Carroll County, be the one to complete the APFO questionnaire for us or if there might be, you know, the Carroll County Volunteer Services, you know, group. I, I'm not sure who the best entity to do that would be, but I think maybe, you know, bouncing it up to the county level might get us more consistent responses than, than just the local fire company, you know, might provide. So, but at any rate, we do look at that during the preliminary plan stage. So, as, you know, Mountain Brook, for example, gets a little bit closer and the comment letters are getting shorter and shorter and we think they're getting close to be, to being approved, we'll run everything, run all the APFOs, you know, we'll reach out to the schools. They're usually a very quick turnaround on, you know, school capacity projections. We'll reach out to, you know, whether it ends up being, and maybe we send it to the, you know, to the chief here at Tonny Town. But maybe we also, you know, look at the county's concurrency management numbers, you know, for the latest year stats.
Is that report updated annually or?
I mean, it would make sense to do it that way, but.
But you think they have current data, they just haven't done a report, maybe, or?
Yeah, I'm not sure though. I haven't looked at, I haven't looked at it online for a while, but it was, the last time I did, I think it was like a year behind.
It was July 2023 is what.
So, if, you know, if we're kind of pushing the limits on the ability of our fire EMS. So if, you know, if we're kind of pushing the limits on the ability of our fire EMS to respond in where we are today, as we look at the several other developments that are in the pipeline now, should we be planning for another fire, fire station? Good, you know, you know, and I know county, the county is in the throes of trying to figure out how they're gonna staff the ones we have, you know, and there's no money out there because Blueprint's sucking it all up, you know, that throw the brakes on some things, and do we need to have that discussion with developers?
I think it's primarily a, a, a human resources problem, that, you know, they don't have the, you know,
And that's nationwide, that's across, that's across the whole country.
They don't have the young people.
You know, they, they have the apparatus, they, you know, they have the right route and the right time to get to everything within the city, but they don't have the volunteer, you know, manpower to send an engine out, you know, they.
So it's, it's more of a personnel issue than it is a, an equipment and location issue.
Right, so it's not a, it's not a matter of the station not being adequate, or the equipment not being adequate, it's the personnel, the lack of volunteers to respond to get that engine rolling out the door.
That's, and that's something, you know, that's not anywhere near my bailiwick, so that, that's an education thing to me.
Let's keep, let's keep moving on some of these other subjects on here, I want to wrap this up very soon, we got some gentlemen.
Or we get too far from, from Meads Crossing, I'm gonna do something unusual, I would like to say something nice about Meads Crossing, I know I hammer on them from time to time, but they did, while certainly the townhomes are kind of clustered, you know, in one part of the subdivision, they do have single-family homes, you know, on the same streets as townhomes, and single families across the street from townhomes, those who were around for long enough that were, I don't know if anybody here was besides you, Mr. Parker, were on the commission when Meads was going through the process, but they had standard single-family lots and premium single-family lots. Ryan Holmes built the standards, and Bob Ward, at least in the first phase, built the premium lots, or single-family homes, and the premium lots, while they were sort of clustered in these little pockets for the most part, those pockets were interspersed throughout the community, so it wasn't like they put all the big houses over here, and then all the standard houses over here, and all the townhouses, they did kind of mix it up a little bit. You know, the towns are certainly consolidated in one area, but, you know, but we do have, you know, streets where there are singles on one side, towns on the other, and, you know, along Crimson Avenue, you'll drive by standard, standard lot homes and premium lot homes, all on the same street. So I, I think they did a nice job of, of mixing things up to a degree, more than we've seen with some other projects. I think they did a nice job of, of, you know, putting the premium homes sort of scattered around the community, and not like all in one pocket, so. From a design standpoint, I think they did, did some things that, that played out nicely.
Thanks, Jim, for, for some positive input there on that. We have some gentlemen here, and did you have anything you wanted to bring before the commission? If you do, would you please come forward, and glad, we're glad to see you, glad to see. Any feedback or whatever, yeah. Like to see more than just spectators, let's have.
I'd like to encourage more spectators to show up.
So feel free to come up, say something you like, or whatever, I mean, are you residents of Tony Town, or whatever, business owners, whatever. Welcome to, to be here, so, interesting hearing what you have to say. Why, just kind of wrap this here up for this evening.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up one more thing, just because this is something that I think Jay Gulo, you need to look into for us. You know, one of the questions that Dan brought up, you know, had to do with, with, you know, does not, non-buildable land count toward how many houses you can build, and should it, should it not, can it, doesn't, I don't know where, where, where does that stand from a legal standpoint? You know, if you've got, like Sewell's Farm, you know, part of that back down there by Piney Creek is not buildable.
It's the way your code is written now, the, the code calculates density based on the gross acreage, so just make it easy, 100 acres, if it has steep slopes, things that aren't buildable because they're just not buildable, right, not because.
And a flood plain is a steep slope, or, right.
Right, so let's say you had, let's just make it easy, you had 100 acres, you could build one lot per acre, that's 100 lots, but let's say 20 acres is flood plains, steep slopes, yada, yada, you can still build 100 lots, you could just only do it on 80 acres at that point in time. I mean, again.
Well, that meets the density requirements, right.
So it meets, if you wanted to do what you're talking about, then you would be using, you could change the code, and you'd be using a net density, meaning that you'd find out what your, your acreage is that can be built on, and just use the density of that, but there are certain restrictions, like, for example, if you say, well, I want developer, I want you to give me open space, and I need 20% open space, but that land could be built on, but you're demanding it to be an open space, well, then there's a, a way you need to credit that back, so there are certain things when you say non-buildable, like if there's a big lake in the middle of it, that's non-buildable, right, but they would still get credit for that lake, so you get the idea of what we'd have to do.
So our, our, just to interrupt you, I was just saying, our code currently says gross acreage, no matter what it is.
That's, yes.
And so when we calculate density, it's based on that gross acreage, at this time, absent any change in code.
That's correct.
That's what I, that was the answer I was looking for.
But then you take the 20% off for green areas, or your parks, or whatever.
Yeah, so go to the math, 100 acres, you take 20% off, so you have 80 acres that you can be built on, but you can build 100 units, and mine was one per acre, right, you can build 100 units on 80 acres.
And yet they'll still need to admit the minimum lot requirements for whatever zoning district or the table of area and bulk for Community Village, so it's, it's, you know, gets more complicated.
We good with that?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
No.
Well, I kind of agree, but kind of, you know, so it looks like our next meeting should be February 24th. Last chance, any comments from the floor? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
They're moved.
Chris, I need a second, second by Bill, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Kerry, thank you very much. Save your papers for next month, we'll pick up any other things we want to talk about, I'm sure there's.